I'd like to call to order the meeting on the February 2nd, City of Eldorado Commission Meeting. First thing, we'll have invocation and our minister's not here tonight, so if you'll bow your heads, I'll say a prayer here. God be with us here tonight as we make decisions that affect every citizen in our community. Help us to remember we represent the young and the old, the rich and the poor, the healthy and the disabled. Help us listen to our fellow citizens and do our best for our community. We do appreciate the blessings you have bestowed on Eldorado. Help us work together on our challenges that are before us in the future. Help us to be fair and honest in our dealings. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, which we have Ms. Carter's third grade class at Lincoln Elementary is here to help us with that.
My alma mater.
Next alma mater. There you go. Good job, right there. Back up a little bit. Did you ever come out and do this, Nate?
They didn't have TV then.
Oh.
I believe that.
They had radio.
Yeah, you got a face for radio.
Okay. Name and what you like about Eldorado?
My name is Sean Cagle and my favorite thing about Eldorado is the skating.
My name is Gracie Moore and my favorite thing about Eldorado is the skating rink.
My name is Mason Murray and my favorite thing about Eldorado is the bowling alley.
My name is Kevin Williams and my favorite thing about Eldorado is the YMCA.
My name is Victoria Pizzo and my favorite thing about Eldorado is school.
My name is Brendan Neely and my favorite thing about Eldorado is the city pool.
My name is Nicole Williamson and my favorite thing about Eldorado is the skating rink.
My name is Sarah Ivy and my favorite thing about Eldorado is the skating rink.
My name is Natasha Layton and my favorite thing about Eldorado is school.
My name is Tanner Price and my favorite thing about Eldorado is the bowling alley.
Okay, boys and girls, turn around this way.
You guys start whenever you're ready. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, guys. Great job.
Thank you, boys and girls. Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Thank you. Go Lincoln!
Okay, just so everybody knows, Herb was real sick today, so we're thinking he won't be here tonight. Probably got the flu and nobody wanted to catch it from him, so just want everybody to know where we was at. Next thing on the agenda is a proclamation. We don't have any personal appearance. We have Jen Cook, Activities and Sales and Service Director, for some exciting news about the Shrine Bowl update.
Good evening. I placed in front of you guys each the official media release for the Shrine Bowl today. We found out that it was Thursday. We were not to release it until today, until the Shrine did. So that was exciting to find out Sunday. But we have been chosen to be the official 2017 host of the Kansas All-Star Shrine Bowl event. It'll be a two-day event that will bring to town. Some of the players and the camps will come in a few days prior to the Shrine, but we're really excited to have them. The community is really excited and a lot of good feedback today on Facebook.
So this isn't just a one-day event, this is?
It's a big deal. In the original letter they sent out to Kansas to place the bid, they stated that the past year from the 2-4 will be a competition for the community that supports the event.
Can you explain to folks real quick that aren't familiar with the Shrine Bowl, what exactly that is?
Yes, it's, they choose the top 90 players that are voted off from the churches around the state of Kansas. Senior players are most all going on to play the next level of college sports to come and play from the east and west side. So there's the west team and an east team and it's an all-star football game between... It's an all-star football game between the west and the east kids that are chosen throughout the state.
Cool. So it's a, it's a great opportunity for some football. According to the press release, there's going to be, in addition to the football game, we'll have a big shrine parade downtown. So have all the little Shriners cars and stuff that they get to do. And I guess all the prefaces, I had an opportunity to go with Jen and to Kansas City to make the presentation and great job, by the way, in that presentation, Jen.
Thank you.
But it was, it was a great showing. We had Galen Myers from BG, we had Linda Jolly there from Eldorado Inc., Susie Carson from The Chamber, of course Jen and Molly and Herb was there. We had Sue Gibbons from 490 and Dr. Kroll from the College and Bill Rankenbach from the College. I think our impression at the end of that was that, that the Shrine was really impressed with the, kind of the collaborative presence that we brought from all those organizations. And it was driven by you, Jen, so I mean, good job putting that together. That was a big packet that you put together, you did a great job.
Well, thank you. I think they were impressed by our community support that they saw from the college, the city and USD 490, so we did a great job presenting.
But in addition to the, to the football and the parade, they're, they're going to have a 5K run, there's going to be a cheer camp and a band camp, a golf tournament.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of events that are going to be going on that, that week. So it's exciting. I mean, it's a big deal for Eldorado.
And it's up to Eldorado to kind of put together a week-long event that not only hosts the kids that come to town, like the camp and the combine at the college for the football players, but also to provide an environment for the families that are traveling to come watch their kids play or participate. So you're going to have families that are spending their time here. We're going to have, obviously, all five of the Shrine temples from across the state that will all be here. So it brings a lot of people in. The banquet itself that they have the night before the big game, they anticipate up to 1,200 people at just that banquet, so.
Awesome work. And I just wanted to throw one more thing in there. I mean, this, while this is a great opportunity for the football players and those people participating, it is a fundraiser for the Shriners to raise money for the Shriners Children's Hospital, which has actually 22 separate hospitals that provides pediatric care for children all over the place. And so this is a big event for them, so it's, it's no small choice that they made to have it in Eldorado. So I think it speaks to the work that they thought that the city and the school district and the college and everyone involved was willing to do.
Two years away seems like a long time, but it's going to be here before I know it, so I'm really excited about it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good job. Okay, we're ready for Agenda Item Number One, Public Comments. Do we have anybody in the audience that'd like to come forward, state their name and address and have anything that they would like to bring up for the good of the town? If not, we will close public comments and we will go to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the Consent Agenda. Fellow commissioners, you got any questions on any of that?
No, it looked like it was just the minutes. Sorry, my screen just went down there.
Minutes. And I was going to ask about de-licensing of the Prairie Trail CMV permit. Can somebody talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, we spoke to the ABC, oh, sorry, we spoke to the ABC a couple weeks ago. As you know, Prairie Trails is a cereal malt beverage license holder currently. In the spring, there is a group from Susan B. Allen holding a party there and they wish to have liquor catered in as well as their food that night. According to ABC rules, we have to de-license ourselves for the day and so we will, we will de-license our, from the cereal malt beverage license and the company coming in to cater that night will apply for a temporary license, which you should see at the next meeting, I believe. And then, once that, and then, once that's approved, then they will be responsible for liquor sales that day.
And then, after that event, then it, then we go back to CMV license?
What would the reason for that be when we already have the stuff there?
We are only able to cater, we are only able to cater to events that don't mind if it's a cereal malt beverage, so the, the lower content beer is all we can sell. The group that's coming in wishes to have liquor, wine and the fuller content beer.
And beer options.
Okay.
More options.
It's, this is happening.
That's kind of unusual, isn't it? I've never seen that before, right?
It is, it wasn't something I was aware we could do, that's why we, we had the gentleman from the ABC come in and talk to us about it a couple weeks ago and he explained how to do it and what we needed to get done. So this is the first step.
Does anybody sign any kind of liability waiver, like being on a golf cart in a pond or something?
They should not be on golf carts that evening, this is not a golf event, this is strictly inside.
Got you, it isn't a golf event, okay.
They'll sign, they'll have a rental agreement, just like we have at all our city facilities, that they pay any of the damages to the facility.
Okay, good. Okay, any other questions, guys?
Mr. Mayor, move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
Motion and second and discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Agenda Item Number Three, Project Number 392, which is the Eldorado Sewer Improvement, which is a KDHE revolving loan. Anybody like to visit about that?
Yes, I'll, first of all, the, the purpose of this agenda item is to hold two public hearings and those public hearings can be held simultaneously. And the purpose of those public hearings is also to describe the scope of the project, alternatives, financial obligations. And so, I'm going to, I'm going to briefly do that. This project is to replace sewer. In the southwest part of Eldorado, we have an area of sewers that are both undersized. Eight-inch sewers is the standard, that's what we have all over town, except for in this one isolated area. And so, it's difficult for us to maintain those sewers because all of our equipment is set up for a minimum size of eight inches and this is six-inch sewer. And as well, in some places, the sewer's completely failed, it's in very poor condition. We looked at several alternatives to remedy this, this problem area. Cured and placed pipe is what we typically do on eight-inch clay tile sewers that are in need of rehabilitation. Of course, this is undersized, so that wouldn't do any good. Replacing the pipe, we looked at that and we also looked at pipe bursting. Pipe bursting is basically sending a machine through the existing pipe that actually bursts the pipe, expands the hole and pulls a new line in behind it. And then you go back and connect taps. Because this is a CDVG grant, we are also able to fund any service lines that need attention. A service line is the line that goes from your home out to the sewer line and that is typically everywhere else. It's the homeowner's responsibility for that. But this, because of this grant, we are, we are allowed to use grant money to help the homeowners out and repair those service lines, so it'd be a great thing for this part of town. I'm going to go to the podium. Here you can see on the map, this area shaded in pink is all the six-inch lines. And so, all of those lines will be replaced, as well as the service lines, the taps, and any service lines that need repaired up to the foundation of the home. So that's, that's one area and then I'll go to the next. And then there's a section of eight-inch right here that we'll go in and do that's in really bad condition also.
Kurt, will you make sure your mic's on? Is there?
Saying something, Kurt.
Test, test.
You just didn't have enough to hear.
The, the project, total project cost is $1,077,600. Of that, the grand amount is for a half million dollars from the state of Kansas Department of Commerce. The city sewer revenue will be paying off the general obligation or the, the state revolving loan fund for this project. A rate increase will not be needed to pay for this project. Do you have any questions about the project or the financing?
Has it been bid yet?
It has not been bid. The project will go out to bid in April with a completion date somewhere in the fall of this year. And at the next, the next City Commission Meeting, we'll have an agenda item that is to sign the loan agreement for the state revolving loan fund. And the, I believe the interest on that loan is 2.18%, so pretty, pretty low interest on it, too.
Can you explain the word revolving, what that means on that part of the loan?
The state revolving loan fund, the federal government EPA allows a certain amount of money to each state to use for critical infrastructure projects like sewer and water. And so, they give money to the state to loan out and do these projects and also grant money. And so, I guess the revolving loan just means that each year they get money from EPA and it's loaned out to municipalities to do projects for infrastructure repair.
Thank you.
And this project, I think Scott mentioned at the last meeting, this project was the highest scored project in the state of Kansas this year, so definitely a needed project.
Well, and I think probably a lot of that is because of you and your staff submitting the grant and knowing how to submit the grant.
Yeah, I think, I think we're getting better at it.
Fantastic job on...
Taking pictures and documenting service calls and repairs and all that thing helps you get grant points and so we're, we're starting to, to figure out how to do better on the grants, too.
Great job to you and your staff.
Thank you.
What's the length of time on the loan, Kurt? Do you know, is that a 20-year deal or?
I believe it's a 20-year, yes.
I know in my notes, I had that, that I appreciate the work of staff on this project. This is exactly the type of projects we need to be working on and moving us forward as a community and I take that along with what's happening down on Skelly or on Tuwanda Street. There's a lot going to be going on down there in the next year, so.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Great job, great job.
Thank you.
For sure.
We don't need a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, you need to open the public and second public hearing.
Got you, okay.
You'll need to read that verbiage exactly to make sure we do as they have asked. So you'll need to say that you're opening the public hearing to discuss the scope of work, alternatives and financial obligations for both the...
I don't see that in my stuff here.
Look at your background on item number three. Do you have item number three?
It's not this stuff here, is it?
No, you look at your actual agenda item.
Okay. Oh, and background, okay.
And if you look at the second, the second statement.
Okay.
You'll need to open the first public hearing.
Got you, okay. This is, so read that, second paragraph.
Just say, I'd like to open the first public hearing...
I'd like to open the first public hearing to discuss the scope of work, alternatives and financial obligations for both the scope of work and any alternatives. The second public hearing, okay, don't worry about that.
Go ahead and stop there.
Okay.
Ask if anyone's here to discuss.
Is there anyone here that would like to discuss this?
Now, you can close that public hearing if no one's here.
Okay, we'll close the first public hearing with no comment from the public.
And then you'll open the second public hearing to discuss project cost estimates?
Okay.
Et cetera.
At this time, I'll open the second public hearing to discuss project cost estimates, current sewer rates and if any changes will be made to the rates.
And just to clarify, at this point, Kurt, you said that no rate increases will, we won't have any rate increases to pay for this?
Correct. A rate increase will not be needed to pay for this project.
Okay.
Any other public comment? If not, we'll close the second public hearing at this point. And that's all we need to do with that, then, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good.
All right, we move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is the bike lane signage. Staff as present, present several options for bike lane signage.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, over here behind Tabitha, I'll grab her here in just a minute or maybe she can slide aside and see him. Commissioner, I think this was something that you were, you maybe wanted to see the progress on that. Staff has designed... You don't have to be man, it's okay.
I don't know where to put them all.
Why don't you all just hold one in Vanna, Vanna Wythe?
These are, these are signs that, that staff made, that we did the, the design work on them. These are all three probably going to be used in the project, probably not all three on the same post, but for the different areas in which they'll be signed, different signs will be used in the, in the different areas. So you'll see, you see all three of the ones that we intend on using and those are ready to start being mass-produced and get them out there. So just an update on what's going on with that.
These look good. They do look good. And so just to kind of explain to everyone at, at home, you've got one, this yellow sign is just an informational sign, just to remind people to be careful and share the road with bikes.
Yeah, anything in, anything in yellow and black is informational. The black and whites are actually what are enforceable. And so, the black and white one here that, that says "bike lane" on it will identify the, the area outside of the curb line that's, that's for bikes to travel in. The other one that you see next to it, this black, white, orange, is a reminder that the state law is three feet for the bikes to be able to use, so. Those will most likely be used on, on streets that are wide enough to be able to allow that with the other lanes of traffic. The others will be used for areas where we know there's bicycle traffic, where we're encouraging bicycle traffic, but the street may be only as wide as it is, so.
Well, it's exciting. So not a lot of bike traffic today, when it was seven degrees out, but I, I think, I think we've been seeing a lot more runners and bicyclers in Eldorado and I think that this is, you know, we spoke to it in the competency plan and kind of the need for this and I think that this is a, a great start, for sure.
I think it's also important to point out that several years ago, staff purchased the machine to be able to make our own signs. Prior to then, we bought all of our own signs. So when a stop sign was $65, right now, we make, we make them for about 13. And so, when you look at the cost to do this project because of what we had done in the past to be able to make our own signs, those costs are half or if not more of what they would cost us if we went out and ordered these from a sign company to be done. So these all meet MUTCD standards and will be hung in accordance with MUTCD, so. Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices, I meant.
Will we be painting a white line on the road in the days that make that bike lane?
My understanding is in some of those areas, Scott has identified actual paint that will go down on the road to, to identify the actual bike lane itself.
And that will eliminate parking on that road, too?
That would, that's correct. Now, obviously, that's done in areas where there may or may not already be parking, no parking allowed and so forth.
Good work, they look, I think they look great.
Yeah, they do, Rodney did a great job on, on getting them laid out. And again, that's something that's very, it's very intricate. I mean, you got to make sure that everything looks right, you got to have it in the right font, so that it's enforceable and...
They look, they look very professional.
So we've, we've got the signs done, but as you guys move forward and, and Scott has these layouts of where we might, may or may not add the lane or, or get rid of parking, then that's, that comes back, that would come back to us to confirm that that's where we want to go as far as getting rid of parking and so...
Scott's got maps already, we, and I didn't, I didn't bring them with me, but Scott's got maps already that will show exactly where the, where the paint will go on the ground and other areas where we'll sign, but not necessarily paint on the ground as well, so.
Okay.
Cities all over, all over Kansas and we've gotten some pictures from, when we traveled to different communities that have signs. We've taken pictures of all their signs and there's a combination of signs. I mean, it, it just depends on, on, none, none are odd, none, none are not MUTCD, so everybody stays in that realm, but there's no rhyme or reason to which ones they do. So we brought back the, the three most popular and, and did that, so.
In designing Tuwanda Street, did we think about putting bike, enough room for bikes and laying down Tuwanda or are we going to stick with a bike path, six-foot sidewalk?
I think they'll be, I, I'm not exactly sure how wide they'll be. I think our bike path is 10. It may not be true, but I think it is. It's wider than a normal sidewalk and six sounds small, so it's either eight or it's 10, one of the two. And I would imagine that's what Scott has us put in most of the time when we add, like going up to the middle school, that's extra wide and that to be able to accommodate both bikes and pedestrians at the same time, so.
Well, in most, in some of my travels to different, well, just for instance, Florida has a tremendous amount of bike lanes. And I mean, they are a three-foot piece of concrete added onto the street and they, there's miles and miles and miles.
Manhattan, of course, being a college town, lots of students travel all by bike in Manhattan as well and those are actually, a lot of those bike lanes are actually painted on the road, so.
Right.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
Need some help with those?
Okay, we are ready for Agenda Item Number Five, which is the State Department Finance Department. What's the state of the department here?
I'm just going to give a presentation on the budget process.
Okay.
And I'm really glad Brad fixed the mic because I practiced with no mic in my hands. All right. Hey, there is a lot of work that goes into the budget process that the City Commission and the citizens of Eldorado do not see. Therefore, I have put together this presentation to educate the citizens and the City Commission on the budget process. The budget process starts in November and ends in August. We have already started the 2016 budget process. At the first City Commission meeting in November, our city clerk requested names to appoint to the Sales Tax Committee from the City Commission. At the first City Commission in December, the City Commission appointed the members of the Sales Tax Committee and approved the 2016 salary schedule. City staff started working on the 2016 budget before the holidays. The department heads had compiled their capital improvement plan and their equipment replacement plan and had presented them to the... The department heads had compiled their capital improvement plan and their equipment replacement plan and had presented them to the city manager. Department heads have also presented their funding requests to the Sales Tax Committee. The budget includes the following steps. The capital improvement plan, our CIP. The equipment replacement plan, ERP. Sales tax allocation, that's our excess sales tax allocated by the Sales Tax Committee. Operating budgets. Outside agencies. And state budget. The first step is our capital improvement plan, CIP. It started twelve eighteen of fourteen and will be adopted five eighteen of fifteen. What is done before the City Commission is involved? The department heads begin preparing their six-year CIP plan. The departments present their CIP requests to the City Manager and Finance Director. Proposed CIPs are distributed to the Planning Commission. The department heads present their CIPs to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission Secretary reviews the CIPs to ensure they follow the comprehensive plan. There are three opportunities for the citizens to be a part of the CIP process. City Commission Workshop on April fifteenth at four o'clock. Public Administrative Hearing with the City Manager, April twenty-eighth at five thirty. City Commission Meeting, May eighteenth at seven o'clock. All are published in the paper ten days prior to the meeting. This is a snapshot of the calendar used for the CIP process. Highlighted in red is the first time the City Commission is involved. I share this so the citizens can see that there is a lot of work done by the Planning Committee and staff prior to coming before the City Commission. CIP funding sources can come from our operating budget. Excess sales tax, which is allocated by our Sales Tax Committee. Federal and state dollars. General obligation bonds. Specials. Sales tax street rehabilitation, which is by our ordinance. State revolving loans. And other sources such as USD four ninety, the county, Butler Community College, and citizen donations. The next step in our process is the Equipment Replacement Plan, ERP. This is our second step, and it started twelve eighteen of fourteen, when the department heads started the CIP process. The ERP is a tool used by the department heads to determine what is needed to do their jobs efficiently over the next five years. This is also known as the Equipment Wish List. The department heads present the ERP to the Finance Director and the City Manager. After much discussion, the current budget year is entered into the budget with the option to be cut if necessary. The next step in our process is the Sales Tax Allocation. And we follow ordinance S- thirteen twenty-three, which states that the first six hundred thousand shall be allocated annually for street rehabilitation. The next one million three hundred and fifty thousand shall be used annually for property tax reductions. And the next fifty thousand to be annually, to be allocated annually for economic development and job creation. The balance is our excess sales tax. The purpose for the use of excess sales tax collections are additional street rehabilitation, additional property tax reduction, and capital expenditures. The Sales Tax Allocation started November of fourteen with the appointing of the committee by the City Commission. The committee started January twelfth, and the City Commission will either accept or decline the committee's recommendation on March second at the City Commission meeting. What is done before the City Commission is involved? The department heads present funding requests to the Sales Tax Committee. Sales Tax Committee holds public hearing to receive funding requests. There are two opportunities for the citizens to be a part of this process. Sales Tax Committee's public hearing, February ninth, this upcoming Monday, at five thirty PM in the Commission Room. And the City Commission meeting on March second at seven o'clock. This is a snapshot of the Sales Tax Process. Highlighted in red is the first time the City Commission is involved. I share this so the citizens can see that there is a lot of work done by the Sales Tax Committee and staff prior to coming before the City Commission. The next step in our budget process is the operating budget and outside agencies. This process starts January seventh with the City Workshop Budget Vision for Departments and City Commission to express their budget visions and is adopted at the first meeting in August. What is done before the City Commission is involved? This is very condensed. Department heads and outside agencies work on the budgets beginning in March. Department heads and outside agencies present budget requests to the City Manager in April. The Finance Director meets with the City Manager to review department head budgets in May. And department heads meet with the City Manager and Finance Director to cut budgets if necessary. All budget City Commission Workshops and meetings are open to the public. There are five opportunities for the citizens to be a part of this budget, this portion of the budget. May thirteenth, City Commission Workshop for outside agencies and department heads to present their budget request. This is the first draft. March or May twenty-seventh, City Commission Workshop for Opportunity for Discussion and to ask questions of outside agencies and departments on their presented budgets. July first, City Commission Workshop for Finance Director to present second draft, along with state budget forms, for the opportunity for discussion and questions. July fifteenth, City Commission Workshop to Review Final Budget. City Commission to provide a list of questions they would like answered at the City Commission meeting on August third. Final meeting, August third, City Commission Public Hearing and Adoption of the Budget. The only adopt, the, the only adoption of the budget is published ten days prior to the meeting. This is a snapshot of the calendar used for the operating budget process. Highlighted in red is when the City Commission is involved. I share this so the citizens can see that there is a lot of work done by the staff prior to, uh, coming before City Commission, and that the Commission has several meetings for discussion of the budget. How it all flows together. All items in the next few slides highlighted in red are when the City Commission is involved in the budget process. It begins in November, the process begins with the City Commission providing names for the Sales Tax Committee. In December, City Commission approves the salary survey and appoints the Sales Tax Committee members. In January, City Commission Workshop, Budget Vision. And the Sales Tax Committee meets and begins the Sales Tax Process. February, the City Commission Workshop to Review Comprehensive Plan. Sales Tax Committee holds second meeting. CIPs distributed to the Planning Commission. March, City Commission hears recommendations from the Sales Tax Committee. Department heads begin the operating budget process. Department heads present CIP requests to the Planning Commission. In April, Department heads and outside agencies present budget requests to the City Manager. And the City Commission Workshop for Department Heads to Present Their CIP Request. In May, a mill levy is determined. There are budget cuts. City Commission Workshop, First Draft, May thirteenth. City Commission Adoption of the CIPs. City Commission Workshop for Questions and Discussion from First Draft. In June, Finance Director creates Second Draft and compiles into state budget forms. And City Commission review the First Draft and prepare for Workshop July first. In July, the City Commission Workshop to Review Second Draft and State Budget Forms. And City Commission Workshop to Review Final Budget. And finally, in August, City Commission Adoption of the Budget. As you can see, the City Commission is involved in the budget process every month, from start to finish, in all steps of the budget process. What's new for 2016? January seventh, Budget Vision Meeting. This budget presentation. Department heads and outside agencies will present to City Commission on the same days. On May twenty-seventh, City Commission Workshop for Opportunity for Questions and Discussion of the Budgets. At this time, the City Commission will have had the budget for two weeks to review. This meeting is to answer questions and have discussion of the outside agencies and department head-presented budgets. On July first, City Commission Workshop, Second Draft, State Budget Forms. At this meeting, the City Commission will see the, for the first time, the budget, Second Draft, and the State Budget Forms, filled out from the Second Draft. July fifteenth, City Commission Workshop, Final Budget. The City Commission will have the Second Draft and the State Budget Forms for two weeks to review. I would like for the City Commission to provide a list of questions they would like answered at the City Commission meeting on August third, when the adoption of the budget will take place. This will allow the City Commission to ask questions for the benefit of the citizens of El Dorado and allow staff to be prepared to answer those questions. In closing, as I began to develop this presentation, I realized that staff assumes that the City Commission and the citizens of El Dorado understand the budget process. This may or may not be true. Each year, the education of the City Commission is ongoing, as each budget is a new process. Thank you.
Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got one suggestion for staff, and I know that we're with the new website, putting up commission meetings on YouTube, but I would suggest cutting that piece out and possibly just labeling it separately, Budget Process Explanation, and somewhere have that on the site. I think that would be beneficial.
People should grab that.
If people are curious, we can direct them to that, what you just did right there.
Okay, sure.
And so if that's doable, I think that would be. Yeah, just have Tammy record it out. But if you can cut it, that'd be, I think that'd be beneficial to have up there.
Tammy, good job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Hopefully it helps. That was part of my, um, CPM project.
Good.
Well, I understood every word of that.
I did it just for you, Nick. Kept it simple.
It had to have been a real good job.
Tammy, I see some improvements in that. A couple of quick questions for you. Who put that calendar together? Did you do that?
I did that.
Okay. And these are just suggestions that, can you explain that budget vision?
I cannot. That was something new this year that Herb wanted. And as I understand it, it was, um, not needed this, this year. It was, I don't know what actually went down there.
Yeah. Uh, it, it had to do with the twenty thirty Comprehensive Plan Vision Statement, I think's what that was, 'cause I kept seeing twenty thirty.
I, I think it was, I'm not quite sure what it was. I was just told to add it to my calendar.
Yeah. And I, this is a suggestion that I have. Uh, I'd like to suggest a meeting of a twenty sixteen budget vision. And what I mean by that is that we review actual expenditures from fourteen. It would be nice to see if we had twelve, thirteen, and fourteen lined up together. Review the year twenty fourteen's problems, concerns, good things, bad things. Part of the planning should include where we have been, I guess is where I'm coming from, Tammy's, as we go forward into something like this. And review the Commission's current concerns and priorities, giving the City Manager some guidance on where the Commission would like to set, set priorities for twenty sixteen. Now, I'm just saying, if that's early in the game, Herb has an idea what these five guys are thinking about here. That kind of helps starting through that process of what's, what's things that we need to address and how we address it, kind of, just a suggestion. And so I, that vision plan, instead of twenty thirty, I'd envision more like a twenty sixteen.
Mayor, I think.
You might think about that.
I think the work session on Saturday on the Comprehensive Plan, the goal of that is to kind of see where you all want your focus to be with all the department heads there.
Okay.
To get some direction. So I think a piece of what you're talking about is gonna be covered on Saturday.
Okay. And it could be, you know, we get that, that'd be great. The other thing that, uh, on the Sales Tax Committee, and this is back when originally started and has probably evolved, but I was kind of surprised when you have your first meeting, that they, do they give history of the sales tax and how much money we got? And, you know, kind of go into that part, 'cause I know they was there for about an hour, I think, 'cause we had a meeting right after that, that day. And, and I was, it used to be you had a meeting like that and you had stuff to absorb.
Yes.
And I was kind of surprised that the staff was presenting at that time. I'm, I wonder why the staff can't present when the public does.
We do, we do both. We try to limit it because they're all working people, and we, we don't want a lot of meetings, you know, to take them away from their busy schedules. So what we do is we explain at the first meeting what the Sales Tax Committee is for.
Yeah.
And we explain where it comes from and what the ordinance is for, and, um, we give them some history on what's been done in the past. And then it's very brief that the department heads, um, present their request at that one. And then we also have a public hearing where the public can come and give their request. And it's also published in the paper where people can, um, call or write to the committee, so.
So, so I guess the only thing I'm questioning about that is why staff doesn't present when the public does? And it's all presented to the people. I mean, that was under the meeting.
It's all presented to the Sales Tax Committee in some way, shape, or form. So we give the citizens their own time, and we give the department heads their time. But it's all, it's all given out to the committee for them to decide.
I just find that interesting that at the first meeting, staff's got them in the room telling them what they'd like.
It's just recommendations.
Why they couldn't be all together with the community and it be all public.
Well, I think just to break it up. I mean, it is all public, but it's, yeah, those are working folks, and they don't have time. I mean, I know the people that I've had and the others that have been appointed, I mean, they're.
It's just, it's just a simple way to do it, and, and, um, it, it seems to be easier. It's not, nothing is decided on that first meeting.
How do we decide, how do we know what staff presented?
Mr. Mayor, there's minutes, and they'll be, they'll be brought to you after the Sales Tax Committee approves those minutes. They'll be brought to you at the following commission meeting.
Okay.
So you'll see minutes for that meeting, and you'll see minutes for their second meeting.
Okay.
And, uh, the department heads will present again at the public hearing.
Yeah.
There was only actually one department head this time, but.
Yeah.
They will do it again.
But there's usually, I assume, I know, speaking with some of them, there's some more dialogue that goes into that conversation with department heads. And I think for the sake of not having a three-hour meeting, you know, they're able to dissect some of that with staff before they get into it with citizens, and.
Right.
But they all have the opportunity. I mean, it's all public knowledge to anyone that really wants to know.
Yeah. Well, I, I would think that the public would like to know what staff's presenting.
And they can. I mean, they can.
Wait, is that published in the paper?
No, that one's not published in the paper.
Again, Mr. Mayor, the, the department heads will present at the public hearing.
So they're presenting twice, then?
Yeah, they, they will come back and bring their suggestions again. But now the committees had time to look at those. They're gonna hear from the public, and they'll hear from the department heads. And then, um, they can either make their decision, or they can sit on it and have another meeting. We leave that part up to them.
Yeah, okay. All right, I just was wondering that. And I think you kind of covered that from some of the stuff you said from what I had in here, 'cause I had, uh, the City Commission Workshop to Reach Consensus on Funding for Outside Sources. You know, when we're sitting there publicly, have heard all this, then you decide how much and who, which department's gonna get what.
That's why I've changed it for you this year. I want to give you time, and I've given you two weeks in between each.
Each deal, okay. All right. So there's some improvements, Amber, on that.
Plus, plus, you will, this is the first year you'll, you'll get the state budget forms along with the second draft.
Yeah.
I'll work hard, but yeah, I'm gonna have that done for you so that you can look at the state budget form.
Thank you.
And then look at what we presented in the second draft and compare.
Great, great job. Great presentation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for the improvements you've made in that. Okay. We are ready, gentlemen, for Agenda Item Number Six, which is Project Number 467, Raw Water Line Repair. Mr. Boakout, you want to visit with us on that?
Yeah, I'm going to bring up a slide here. Okay. As you're aware, we have two raw water transmission lines that transport water from El Dorado Lake to our water treatment plant, and our other raw water customers, including Holly Frontier and the City of Augusta. Those, two lines, one is a 24-inch cast iron line that was built in 1926, so it's almost 90 years old. And that line was built to transport water from Old Lake El Dorado, and it is currently being utilized to transport water from the new lake. In addition, in 1980, when the lake was finished, we built the 36-inch pre-stress concrete line. That's the second line that transports water. And, and these lines, and this, this drawing is important here, these lines are redundant, except for where it crosses this channel right here. And so, currently, on the north side, you've got the 36-inch here, the blue dash line, and then the 24, and then, there's a Y here, where the Y connects the 24 and the 36, and then you have one line that crosses the channel, and then you go back to two lines. And so, were it not for this section of the line, we would have two completely redundant lines. We, we have recognized this vulnerability, and have actually had this improvement in the capital improvement plan for a few years, but kind of, kind of put it off, however recently, with the, the leak on our 24-inch line, where it crosses the river just north of the water treatment plant. I think it kind of exposed and brought this vulnerability home, and, and made us think, okay, in order to fix this leak that is under the river, we've got to do a bore. We need to go ahead and do the bore out here by the lake, so we have two completely redundant lines. The problem, of course, is, we have two lines, if, if there is a problem with either one of those lines currently, we have to shut down both lines, and we have to go to our river pump, our emergency supply for the river pumps. If this happens in the summertime, it can present problems where we, we can't get water, or they can't get water, if we're to lose electricity. As it is now, we have, Mother Nature Gravity is support, is supplying us with water from the lake, and in the river pump station, we're relying on, on Westar. We're also relying on some very old equipment in the river pump station, that, that it's going to continue to work. And so, obviously, if we can, for just adding this pipe, if we can add quite a bit of, of protection for the City of El Dorado, our customers, and especially Holly Frontier, to maintain water supply, I think that's a good idea. So, this bore across the river right here, this would add that redundancy, and if we go back to this, you can see the 36-inch line coming in here, and then the 24-inch line coming in here. This is approximate location of the, the leak. That's where they actually dug, that we think the leak is coming from a section that's covered in concrete underneath the river. And of course, the, the yellow dash line is the new bore to connect these two. Scott's engineers estimate for completing both of these projects, including both bores, a 24-inch orange valve, which we already installed in this location right here. We installed a valve, which allowed us to, to shut down this portion of the line from here back to the city, so that we could dig on that leak. And then, it also includes temporary financing and 10% contingency, so we obviously expect this project to come in, much less than the 400 and 2,000 that the resolution calls I think that's, yet I don't think I've left anything out. Do you have any questions about the project?
So cost estimates around 400,000?
Yes. And we have been continuing to communicate with Holly Frontier on, on some issues that may have caused this leak, and we don't know that for sure yet, but we're working with them, and they've been very helpful, so.
I saw a picture of that valve. That thing's a monster.
Yeah, the 24-inch valve we installed, of course, is the biggest valve we've ever installed. Just the valve itself weighed 3,000 pounds, so it's a pretty good, pretty good-sized valve. I will say, that this cast iron line, when we're, where we exposed the cast iron line out, it's, it's right next to the pump house that supplies raw water to the golf course. They're just north of Vintage. I was, I was really amazed. This cast iron line, that's almost 90 years old, looked brand new.
Was it pretty good?
It looked really good. And, and inside it, looked inside it, didn't see any zebra muscles in it, so that was good news, too. So they're not, they're not causing us any problems in our transmission lines. We, we kind of knew that, at least at the water treatment plant, when we installed a new Venturi flow meter, or a mag meter, that replaced a Venturi flow meter, I believe a year or two ago. We kind of crawled up in the line and looked at it, and we didn't see any at the plant, so, but integrity of that line looks really good.
That's good. Good old cast.
Yeah.
What kind of bond pricing on a 20-year bond are we talking today? Was there any discussion on that?
Yeah. Tammy, do you remember the interest on that, on the, the bond? I think it was like...
It's probably like 20.8 something.
On a 20-year GO bond?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioners, you got any other questions?
We need to do it.
I, there's no question, we need, I agree with that. Do we have any kind of reserve at all? And, and what I mean by that, surely we're going to have water breaks throughout the year, and you're going to have costs, and surely we got some money set aside for this type of thing?
We, we have money in our budget to handle leaks, and we have, you know, a number of leaks every year on, on water lines and main repairs and things like that. But this would, even one of these would more than wipe out what we typically spend in a year's time for all leaks in the city.
Yeah.
And, of course...
Because this is, and this is a big bore. This is...
Yeah.
How deep did you guys?
The, the bore under, the bore will be a 48-inch diameter bore. They'll pull a 30-inch diameter HDPE, which is just a really thick type of rubber plastic, a very thick walled, 30-inch outside diameter with a 24 to 25-inch inside diameter, so we'll have the same flow, but a much thicker walled, and so, it's a...
And they charge by the inch foot.
So it's a, yeah, it's, it's a big, big bore job. 48 inches.
Big.
It's a huge tunnel going underneath the river, in both locations, and the, the profile of the bore underneath, it'll be about five or six feet under the bottom of the riverbed.
Who does that?
No walk is, is who we've, we've used in the past, and who has been the lowest cost.
If you remember, I'd like to see that machine. I bet that's quite a machine.
It's impressive.
So this, the end result then, at the lake area, there's going to be a redundant transmission lines, one will be a 36-inch line all the way in, and then there's a 24-inch line all the way in?
Correct. And so, it will also...
They're independent, independent feed lines.
Right, be completely independent, and I, I want to qualify that statement. From the intake structure, from the intake structure, there's, there's a wet well on either side, east and west wet wells, and there's 30, two 36-inch lines from the intake structure out to the toe of the dam. And from that point, there's one 36-inch line that goes from there to a valve box, and the valve box is important, because we can isolate. But, but that's, that's all new infrastructure that was put in 1980. And from that valve box is where the two lines go all the way to the city. And so, from that valve box on, if anything happens to either one of those lines, we can still keep the other one in service and deliver water. The other thing that's important, though, is, we've never been able to inspect, and that's why we were so interested when we put this valve in, to look inside and see. I mean, nobody's looked in that line for 89 years. No one knew what kind of condition it was in, and so, we don't know what kind of line the concrete, the pre-stress concrete, that's the, that's the same type of line that Wichita had fail, just outside their treatment plant. And so, you know, this would allow us, in the winter time, if we wanted to shut down that 36-inch line, and run a camera up it to, to see what's going on, and make sure that...
That'd be cool.
We don't have any problems with it. But having a single point of failure where it kills all your water supply is...
Not a good thing.
Is not a good thing. And so, this will, this will dramatically increase the dependability of our transmission lines.
Resolution number...
I got a quick question, Nick, before I finish here. GO bonds, we'll take this 400,000, are we going to combine that with other stuff? Do we have any?
Yes.
So the answer's yes. What other things would we combine that with?
Other projects.
Other projects, okay. The, the question that I have is, if we take and combine these, and we put them in a GO bond, then the payments are made out of our property tax?
No, no, we separate the payments for, this will all be water.
That's what I wanted to know. Okay, so these payments will not show up under our debt deal on our property tax?
No.
It's going to be a separate payment that comes out of water?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I move that Resolution Number 2752, a resolution of the City of El Dorado, Kansas, authorizing improvements to the city public water supply system, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof, Project 467. Second.
Got a motion and a second? Is there any discussion?
This, this is one of those projects where we always talk about the wants and the needs. This is a need.
Definitely a need.
Yeah, you're right. Anything else, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Agenda Item Number Seven, a resolution providing for the payment of costs thereof, Project 379, Regional Water Study.
This is my last agenda item, and of course, this is, as you talked about, something else that we might throw into a GO bond, this is another item. What this will allow us to do, of course, this is the Black and Beach Water Study that was done, it looked at the quantity of water available, that we could sell to other customers, drought modeling, the amount of water available under various drought conditions, treatment technology options, identified potential routes to route water to the west, and then also provided an estimate of what we might charge for that water. And so, the study was, was needed in order for us to pursue marketing this renewable resource. This was the project to do that. And by assigning this into a project, when we develop water sales later in time, we'll be able to capture and recoup those costs by assigning this to this project. And so, this is a resolution to, to assign this to a project and finance it through GO bonds.
So this is a contract that we got into in September of 2011?
Yes.
And we're just paying it now? I was thinking, we, there's like 175,000 at one time, and...
It's been paid for, but this is just assigning it a project, so...
Okay.
And, and financing it through the GO bond. Is that correct? Go ahead.
It already has a project, and the expenses have already been expensed out to that project. We now need to have this resolution for bond council, so that it is legally documented for going to bond.
How long ago did we actually pay this? I mean, is...
This is, this was ongoing for whenever we did the study.
Okay.
And you guys approved to do the 250,000?
Right.
And it was going to go to bond? This is just to have bond council get the paperwork, the resolution that they need for it to go to bond. It's already been approved by you guys to go to bond, they just need this resolution done.
How long ago did we approve that? I don't remember that. Was that back before we got...
Whenever you, whenever you approved them to do the project.
Yeah, it was.
Before I was here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think it was 2012.
Okay. Has this, did we have the money to pay for it, and we're just reimbursing ourselves? Is that what's going on there?
I believe so.
Or is it on temp notes right now?
It'll, it'll go to bond, and it'll also come out of water, for repayment.
I mean, is it on temp notes, or did we actually have money in the account that we spent to do that?
There's no temp notes. It was in the account.
In the account, okay. Okay?
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
Excuse me, Commissioner Badway, I apologize, the motion provided was not correct. I've provided one to Commissioner Locke to do it.
I'll do it for you, Nick. Don't screw it up.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2753, a resolution of the City of El Dorado, Kansas, determining the advisability of improvements to the city public water supply system, and providing for payment of the cost thereof, Project Number 379.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Is there any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay. Good job, Sam. We're ready for Agenda Item Number Eight, New Business Discussion Items. Which Commissioner would like to go first tonight?
I can go real quick, because I don't have anything. But I just want to stress again, a big congratulations to Jen, and I know Bill and Herb went as reps for the city, and all the people that Bill...
490 and the college, everybody.
Yeah, but everyone that Bill mentioned.
It's a community effort.
A big thing, and so hopefully that'll be a good opportunity for us to show folks what we can do with that facility, and as a community, and get more of that happening. So anyways, another congratulations to them, and that's all I got.
I've got a couple of things, and that was one of them. I, I spoke to it earlier when Jen made her presentation, but it was, it was a great, it was a great opportunity to go and, and represent the EFABC, and, and I guess, and the commission as well, when I went to Kansas City, and, and got to go to that presentation. Galen Myers from BG opened the presentation for us, and during, during the, his opening, he really spoke to the generosity of the citizens of El Dorado, the willingness of all of the entities that were, that were represented, in addition to the, just all the citizens in El Dorado, the willingness to really step up and, and help make things happen in this town. And it was, it was kind of nice sitting back as, as a Commissioner, and, and, you know, to hear that. You know, he said that's one of the things that really helped them make their final decisions to where they wanted to go with BG. So it was a great presentation. It's a big deal for El Dorado. I'm excited about it. I think Jen did a great job putting it together, and hopefully this is, you know, this leads, leads into some other great opportunities for El Dorado. So that's, that's it for the Shrine Bowl. Those of you that watched the meeting last week, or two weeks ago, and, or read Jewel's report in the paper, we do have, the mayor had requested a, an informational meeting with our financial advisor. We've got that scheduled for February 10th at 4:00. I think it's a great opportunity, if you have, want to learn more about kind of our lake debt, how our investments are, it's a good opportunity for everybody. We changed, the, the time got changed to be, to be at 4:00 in the afternoon, which I think, you know, maybe, maybe is a blessing in disguise, that we can get it in the afternoon, and get some more people down here to, just to listen to what the questions and, and the comments from commish, from the commission, from staff, and from the financial advisor. So I encourage people to come down and, and partake in that conversation. It'll be here in the commission room. It'll be here in the commission room on February tenth at four o'clock. And I had a handful of, handful of concerns for Herb, but he's not here, so I'll email him, and then I'll ask him at the next meeting as well. So that's it for me.
I just, I had a street question, but Scott in here this evening, and I'll echo the other guys on Jen Cook's effort on the Shrine Bowl, everybody that was involved in that. It just, it just shows a lot of community pride, and everybody that was involved, thank you very much.
I will echo the rest of the commission with the Shrine Bowl. I think it'll be a great opportunity in twenty seventeen. Hopefully we can fill in some more slots in between.
Yeah.
I, I do have a, you know, mention, I guess, of, of something that I think we need staff to work on, and that is our entrance into the city from the turnpike or Holiday Inn toward the Walmart drives. The trash buildup in the ditches is phenomenal. I know Herb's not here, but I think maybe we can get the message across and that, that's the beginning of our city in which...
On the south side?
On the south side.
We've had some pretty hellish north winds here the last week or so, too.
Right, but I mean, we gotta, we gotta be diligent on keeping track of it.
I agree with you.
Keeping up with it, and I think there's just a bunch, and it looks just like it is, so.
I saw a sign, I forget, sir. It said Santa's workshop on it, so.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a good point, though.
I agree with that, what you're doing.
I mean, I'd, I'd like for, for, for staff to really watch the entrances, all four of them, for trash, and, and kind of keep it to where it's not noticeable. I, I think that would serve well, and I think maybe in our court system, that'd be a perfect opportunity for public, what's the word?
Community service.
Community service. There we go. I've never done it, so I don't know what...
Came close.
That would...
That was twice.
The, that, I think that would be a great program to, to work on it with some of the young, the young people, old people, to let them understand the difference between the litter and not litter, just how well it looks. So I've mentioned it several times throughout the eight-year tenure I've had, and I don't know if it's ever been implemented, but I'll, I'll say it again.
That'd be a nice going away present.
That would be a very nice one. I'm sure there's a few participants in the program that won't like me doing that, but they'll get over it. That's it.
Commissioner Badway?
Oh, well, he already said it.
Okay, all right. A couple of things that I had. I got a letter in the mail. It was sent to me. I'm going to read a paragraph out of this. You always get people complaining about something, and this is something good, and you like getting this. And I, we have a lot of good city staff that does a lot of good things around this town. But this is talking about, just a note, just a note to let you know how pleasant it was working with Molly Denton of the city's office staff as we prepared for my daughter's wedding, which is held December thirteenth. Molly responded in a timely manner, was patient with us as we wanted to tour the location a couple of times. She answered our question very professionally. She was always available and returned calls promptly. So she said, in the kind of final sentence here says, please share this pat on the back with the rest of the commissioners and especially Molly. So if you pass that on to her, I appreciate it. And this is actually addressed to Herb, and I got a CC at home, and I just, with the commissioners mentioned in there, I thought I'd read this at the meeting, and we'd have something good here. And I'm sure those kind of letters could be written for a lot of people that work here at the city. I took a little drive down Atchison in K Springs, and we're getting closer, gentlemen, getting that done down there.
Yeah.
Looks, I can see what it's going to look like, and I, this, this would be very nice for that area of town. That's been that way forever, so we're moving on with that one. Want to double check our dates. We got a meeting Saturday at nine, Tuesday at nine, the tenth at four. Have we set up a motel informational meeting?
I saw something.
Yes. You got an email from Ms. Jolly this evening, right about five.
Okay, I haven't seen it.
It's for, it's on the eleventh at seven P M., I believe.
Eleventh at seven P M., okay. Thank you. Sometime, it would be interesting, since we bought all the lots at the Greiler Edition, I was kind of wanting to see if we was going to be doing an EPA study out there and kind of maybe some discussion about easements. Staff's probably been working on that. Any one of the guys are here, but just make note of that. I'm kind of interested in, I was going to bring a picture tonight to show you the EPA issue that I see out there, so, and I forgot it at home, so I'll get that to Scott and Herb and let them look at it. The farmer's market building, did we ever, anybody ever decide where the property line was there?
I don't know, Mr. Mayor. You'll have to...
Can you make a note of that, just ask? Because I was hoping that we'd take engineering to go down and at least market so we know where it's at, so. The other thing, I had a gentleman stop me that lives down on the south side of Skelly School, and the street running east and west on the south side of Skelly. He says there's times he can't get in his driveway and can't park in front of his house, and I thought, I know somebody from the police department's here. Maybe you can make note of that, and after school, when school's out, maybe watch that down in that area and see what's going on, but...
Is that Park?
He was...
Is that Park Street?
I don't, I don't...
I think it is. It's not? Well, it used to be.
On the south, on the...
Yeah, it's Park.
It's Park Street, yes.
So if you, if you...
We're not in law just by house.
Check that out. I'd appreciate it on that park.
You got to be able to park on Park Street.
He said, I can't park in front of my own house?
Can't park on Park.
Or get in my driveway, so. And I think that's about the time the school's out, so. Okay, that's all I've got.
I had one more thing.
Sure.
That I, that I forgot. Thursday night, the Chamber of Commerce had their annual banquet and awards, awards night. The city of El Dorado was recognized by the Chamber of Commerce with a commitment to our community award, so recognized our employees for the extra effort put into the community through volunteer efforts. And also Katie Henderson, who works for the city, she won the Cham, El Dorado Chamber of Commerce Volunteer of the Year Award. So I want to say congratulations to all of the city staff, but especially to Katie Henderson for all of the extra volunteer efforts she put in and got the Volunteer of the Year Award.
Very deservedly so.
So I just wanted to make sure, I'd forgotten to mention that. I can't believe I did.
I told you. Remind you.
I can't believe I forgot it. I think we'll all second that, and that's a good point, Bill. I'm glad you got that. Okay. If there's nothing else, we have agenda item number ten.
Number nine.
Number nine?
City manager's report.
Yeah, city manager's reports. Anybody want to give that tonight?
I just have one thing for you.
Sure.
The lake has put up a sign requesting that you pay the permit fee to use the lake parking lot. So Herb asked if staff could do some more research into that and possibly write a letter to the Secretary of Parks and Recreation and Tourism, asking that that be removed.
It's the parking lot at the far north end of the bike path, so right there, kind of east of the spillway. No, well, I'm sorry, west, west of the spillway area, at the end of the bike path, there's a little parking lot there that I believe the city of El Dorado built when they built the bike path, and...
Who'd we make mad?
They are, they are...
How do you access that parking lot? Do you have to go into the lake?
No.
You don't, you don't have to go through any toll booths at the lake.
It's the one.
Okay, no, I know what you're talking about. They're right at the very end of the bike.
But there is a sign there that says you have to have a lake permit to, to park there. We had them take that sign down a couple of years ago, and now they've put it back up.
Take it down again.
Well, they, they cite that there's a mandate from the state of Kansas, I think, to maximize revenue, so they put it, they put it back up.
That's not very community friendly.
No, especially when the city of El Dorado built the bike path and the parking lot there, so.
So Herb just asked for permission to investigate it a little bit more and write a letter to the secretary?
I say yes.
So permitted.
I agree.
Yes.
Okay. And that is it for number nine.
Okay. Number ten, executive session.
We will need about fifteen minutes for an executive session tonight.
That's so cute. Jim, is there, what's exec for? Is it, do we have legal issues or just non-elected personnel or both?
Let's go ahead and get twenty.
I think you better go thirty, and you might be coming back.
Let's try twenty.
Okay.
I vote for twenty.
All right.
I tried.
I know how G M...
I mean, sorry, your fifteen just wasn't going to work.
Mr. Mayor, I move to recess into an executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters and matters related to non-elected personnel, and to reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting in the city, city commission room at eight forty-five P M.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Yay.
Okay, we're back from executive session, and there's no motions to be made, so I would entertain a motion.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
See you Saturday.
Thank you and good night.